I'd like to call to order the Smyrna Planning Commission for December 2017. At this time, we'd ask everyone to stand for a prayer and pledge.
Pardon me, please. Father and heaven, we come to you today, and Lord, we just thank you for everything that you've given us. We're just so grateful for a great town, a great community, and those that serve in it. We ask that you continue to watch over and protect our employees, our policemen, our firemen, the citizens of our town, and to give us to sermon as we make decisions going forward. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
You would deface the flag, would you, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. No citizens' comments at this time?
That's correct.
Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out?
We'll move to approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. If I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Moving on to item number five, new business. A rezoning request, number one, John Floyd, Amville Road. Staff comments, please.
If this is a rezoning request, it has frontage on Lee Victory Parkway as well as the Amville Road. About sixteen point nine seven acres of property has been requested to be rezoned from R1 to a PRD. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and the PRD, which is, to the south is the existing Lee Crossing development, and across the street is Adelaide Park, also is on PRD. Land use plan would support a mix of office retail multifamily in this area. The proposed PRD is a hundred and sixty-two unit townhouse development. It is very similar in style and design as the Lee Crossing development, which is adjacent to the south. Would have connections to both Amville Road as well as to Harold Lee Drive, which is a frontage road along Lee Victory Parkway. So it would have two ways in and out. Would be a mix of garage units as well as those without garages. Again, very similar in scope and density and design as to the Lee Crossing development that's adjacent to it. We did have a couple of comments. One was regarding the amenities requirements. They are proposing a dog park and a kind of a half court, like a basketball or other, could be used for other things as well, court. And they would request that that be allowed to meet the requirements of the amenities as requirements that we have. They are also having playground and sitting areas as well, because those are the two active things when you get over a hundred units that you're required to have.
So dog park and what else?
It's like, it's like a half court, like a basketball court. It's shown on page seventeen.
Seventeen.
The other recommendation that we staff did make was regarding extending the frontage road to the northern property line. The developer would request to not have to do that due to the topography changes and the potential difficulty of actually constructing it. We did mention to them about, you know, the idea of just the right-of-way dedication and not construction, but they, they would request to not have to do either of those. And so, just wanted to pass that here along as well. They are here, if you have any questions, again.
All right, you mentioned right-of-way dedication.
Right.
But not requiring it to be built. Would we, would we, well, that's going to go through their detention area, correct?
That's where they are showing, one of, they got about three shown, but that is their largest detention area.
If they granted that easement or dedication, would they still be allowed to do that? Would we allow them to do that, or would they have to re-engineer the whole?
They would have to redesign it, because if it ever were to be built, obviously, we would have to completely redesign the detention pond at that time. So we would, yeah, just design around the right-of-way if it were there.
Yeah, we just reworked the major thoroughfare plan. We did not show any type of access road or the need for any access road here as anything changed.
We did not, yeah, you're right. We did not show extension of this road along here with the, with the thoroughfare plan, no.
I guess when, you know, when I was looking at it and actually drove down there, I mean, the topography's very steep there. I mean, how would you?
There's floodplain down there, there's none.
Yeah.
There is some floodplain, yes.
Well, if you, if you see the irregular shape of this lot, where it takes that little narrow arm along Lee Victory, well, that's there for a specific reason. I was talking to Kevin about it a minute ago. That is where the major drainage, almost a tunnel, is, where all the water from this side of Lee Victory goes through to get to the creek. It was used for cattle. It's big enough for cattle to walk through, to move the cattle from one side of the road to the other. But it was kept that way, you know, just for the, when they were still working cattle on here. So that's the absolutely lowest part of this whole track. And I assume that, that provides a drainage for a lot on this side of the.
I'm sure a lot of the, obviously the church property and west of Amville Road.
And even the adjacent subdivisions and all like that, that it all comes through there to go, to go to the creek. So it's probably, what, thirty feet below Lee Victory Parkway?
I think the response letter from SEC was about twenty-two, but yeah.
Okay. I also went out there just to double-check myself, because, but I am familiar with the property. On Saturday and right around, there's not a, we didn't require the road being built when, what's it, Legacy?
Comes out the back.
Coming on the other side. Legacy goes through from Lee Victory Parkway over to Amville Road. When this was originally, well, when Lee Victory originally came in, you certainly look at a road like this and decide whether or not you want a frontage road. And at the time, we never put a frontage road on our major thoroughfare plan at any point in time on either side, I don't think, that I ever remember one being there.
Well, we had the Harold Lee Drive was, because you had two crossings across at Lee Victory there.
I know we required it to be built, but I don't know that we ever had a frontage road from, well, I know we didn't, because we would have required Legacy to have, or somewhere in there for it to come over to this adjacent property. In other words, it doesn't connect anything.
Well, I do know the Harold Lee, because that's when Lee Crossing was built, and then the public was then built.
Was it on the major thoroughfare?
It was at that time. No, I don't know.
Okay. But this was.
Prior to that. No, not, not going any further than what's already been built.
And it's like we didn't require one on the other side because of the, the road and its close proximity to the creek, which it's such a narrow strip that we never required a frontage road in that like you would normally do, just because there's not that much that can be developed there. I think that was our same reasoning. And bottom line is, this is the last property to be developed.
Unless something were to happen, be redeveloped.
If we'd wanted the road, we should have required the church to build it to the property line.
The church would probably not do anything with that property, is my assumption. But I serve on the board at that church. That's never been discussed, ever do anything there with that property in addition to what they're using it for now. And I know the, our Parks Department even actually uses some of that for practice fields, and the church works with them on that. So I'm not sure what the purpose for it would be, other than just running it into the property line.
But if you did run it in, you're going to run it in thirty, twenty-two feet above.
The property itself.
The property and whoever would have to connect to it would have to build a road up twenty-two feet just to get to it. And it's just not something that we're going to be doing.
So what thoughts you have?
I would, I'll make a motion to approve it with staff comments and removing the requirement for the front extension road to be added in.
Scratching number five.
Right.
Are you okay with the amenities that they propose, I guess? Is that a?
Because it's already existing there, I am, you know.
No, but I mean, the dog park.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about, dog park and the half basketball court, yeah.
You know, and we've talked about that.
Yeah, we have.
We've kind of started looking more as far as what's, what amenities are out there today and what people are looking for. And I know that we talked about sports fields. I mean, dog parks have certainly been mentioned, and it seems like it's more of what is, is what you're seeing in today's building.
What's actually getting used.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, I.
Well, I won't go into any different things. I'm going to second your motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to recommend the PRD.
Basically, as it's submitted.
As submitted, scratching number five, yes, as submitted.
And, yeah, four and five.
Which does scratch.
Right. Essentially, you're scratching four as well, because they're, basically as it's submitted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Which is fine.
All right.
You know, we know what we're talking about.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. All right. Moving on, number two, Greg Gamble, Isabella Lane, rezoning request C2 to PUD, staff comments.
This is a, it's all of one track, a piece of another track that has been requested to be rezoned. Currently is on C2. Requested to be rezoned to a PUD. About three point five six acres total. It's on Isabella Lane. It's all zoned C2 currently, and all the surrounding zoning is C2. Land use plan would support commercial development. The proposed PUD is for two things. Well, one's a fifteen thousand square feet commercial building, which actually would not need rezoning to do that. But there is part of this part. The other part is a three-story climate-controlled self-storage facility. It's about eighty-four thousand square feet total in the three stories. We do have, which was in your packet, but also in front of you tonight, the larger plan, the layout that shows the proposed building as well as the architectural elevation of the next place.
Well, that page is our architecture, so.
I think it's actually the last page.
Okay.
Basically, the commercial building is a mix of brick, ephes and glass, primarily a brick. The stores building, they're proposing a, about, basically half and half, fifty-one percent brick, forty-nine percent fiber cement board siding.
Let's leave one lot between this development and Rock Springs Road that appears.
Yes, there's, right, as it stands currently, yeah.
Or one, one track.
One track to land, yeah.
Because that immediately behind Home Depot is.
The detention pond for Home Depot, yeah.
Is a big detention pond. I assume that pond was probably designed to take care of this track too, for sure, I would assume.
I, I think it was, but I would have to go back and look. I don't know. I don't remember. It's been several years.
Materials made, design review.
Yes, sir.
It's good-looking, Bill.
What is the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a second. Motion is to recommend this for a rezoning from C2 to the PUD. Any other discussion?
Just add this. I mean, when I look at this, number one, I think it's well laid out in that you've got commercial face facing Isabella. Also to note that where we're seeing the climate control, number one, the exteriors look office-like to me. Number two, is that from a commercial retail development. I just don't see that happening, because the one thing that I continue to learn is that commercial wants road frontage, and they want that visibility. And number three, from an impact basis on Rock Springs, this is something that doesn't generate a lot of traffic while we continue to deal with Rock Springs and traffic counts.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Moving on to item number three, Rocky Top Properties LLC, a rezoning request from R3 to R6. Staff comments.
So this is a piece of property, two fifteen Mill Lane. It's about three point three five acres of property. Surrounding zoning is I3 and R3 in town. The road, as well as the east side of Mill Lane, is not in the city limits. It's a zone RM in Rutherford County. Land use plan would support heavy industrial development in this area. There is no sewer to this property at this time. It would have to extend south from Wade Harrod Road, which would require the developer to either obtain easements across private property, which are, there's a couple or three tracks on the north side there.
Where is it? Can you show me where it is?
The sewer? It's, it's actually in Wade Harrod Road. The, there's some townhouses there on Wade Harrod, there's sewer there.
How close?
I don't. I don't know. Eight to nine hundred feet.
Okay.
They have to, you know, they have to obtain those easements, or they would have to coordinate with Rutherford County. Mill Lane, again, is not in the town limits, so it's still a county road, so they have to work with them if they wanted to utilize the right-of-way to extend sewer. Again, request is zoning is R3, to be rezoned from R3 to R6. The development idea, what he wants to do is townhouses, but obviously R6 would be restrictive to that. But that's what their development plan is. I think that's all I got.
Can he get it there with, would it have to be a force main, or can you get it there with gravity to, do we know?
I don't know, Mike, do you know?
Not a hundred percent sure. I think gravity, but I'll have to check the life form right now to make sure we've been doing.
I know a lot of West Fork and the townhouses and all that. There is some, there are some pump stations involved. It may be that it gravies from here to that area, I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure I see the zoning fit here.
There's a lot of industrial there on that side of the street.
There is, all the properties on Mill Lane are zoned industrial, except this one and the one immediately to the south. And then the church that's at the corner, their properties are commercial. The industrially zoned properties are primarily used through the bacon or the residential, actually.
I assume at some point in time, we rezoned that from I3 to R3.
We did.
Why? Do you, I don't remember why, but I know it all would have been I3 at one time.
It was all I3 at one time. The church, several years ago, requested the C2 zoning, because they had some building plans, and they wanted lesser setbacks. And so we did rezon them to C2. The R3, there were two parcels there, they kind of, they both came in together. The owners were having trouble, they were wanting to refinance or something, and they were having trouble getting it refinanced because of the industrial zoning.
Oh, okay.
And so they requested to be rezoned to R3.
So where's the county property line?
The county line is Mill Lane. Mill Lane is not in the city. That, this is.
Mill Lane to the right is?
Is all county.
Okay.
Other than, there's one, there's one track that says, shows up as R1 there. That's one lot that's south of Wade Harrod Road that was annexed probably fifteen years ago. But everything else on that side is not in the town limits.
Kevin, per, per R6, is that like, is that like fourteen and a half units per acre?
Yes.
So, minusing out your infrastructure, roads and that kind of thing, you could see a thirty-five, forty-five units there.
Sure, yeah.
I just feel like it's a, we're squeezing the zone in an, in an area that doesn't have anything around it that matches out. The R3, as you mentioned, had a purpose, and it's not going to be very dense, but.
What's, what's to the rear? Is that the railroad?
Yes, that's the CSX track that goes into Nissan.
Yeah, I'm struggling with the zoning here too. I mean, what are your thoughts on it?
Well, I mean, of course, obviously, our land use plan is really more of an industrial. Of course, we haven't, there's no sewer there. We haven't really tried to foster a lot of industrial development there, but it does back up to the CSX line and it's near Nissan.
Which Nissan is actually through that facility out there, and kind of some adjacent parcels, or even on their parcels, they've expanded. Correct me if I'm wrong, we've gone back where we've maybe had something that was originally an industrial zone to residential, back to industrial.
We have done that, yeah. On Ford Road.
I think that'd feel better if it all came in together, you know. We could, we had a, instead of pocket zoning this thing, we had more properties that wanted to do the same thing for development purposes. But it just looks like a sore thumb sticking out to me there.
The way it's currently zoned, what would that allow them to do?
Single family. Ten thousand square feet of lawn.
Then you've got houses in an industrial area, even with the R3 beside of it. That could be sold and goes back to industrial.
Sure. I mean, you have, we have the one track south there, and then there's three, two or three north that are industrialized.
All right, do we have someone here, either the owner, or requester, or somebody representing them? Please give your name and address, please, sir.
John Christensen. I'm the managing member of Rocky Top Properties. Apologize for being late. My flight was forty-five minutes.
I heard you had some flight issues.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
Glad you could make it.
Thank you.
What would you like to share with us tonight, sir?
Well, I guess the main thing is, the question that the Kevin and his team had for me was about the sewer. And the sewer stops at Wade Harrod Road and Mill Lane, which is up just at the top of that picture. There's about seventy-five townhomes at that corner, and that's where the sewer line stops. I had three options for getting sewer down to the parcel, the right side of the road, left side of the road, and down the middle. I've talked to both landowners, Mr. Newman and the first landowner. They both are rather excited about me paying for having sewer run all the way down to my property. We're looking at about thirty-four, thirty-four townhomes that would be bricked on the front. The two parcels to the north there are industrial zoned. It'll be a secured, with a gate security entrance. It's what we have planned. So it'll be a nice, a nice development. I have one house on there now, but there's about, it's a, I'm hoping that the fire department gets a good opportunity to have some practice on it.
Okay. Where exactly are the, the multifamily units?
Hey, they're just off this, they're basically, Mill Lane dead ends at Wade Harrod Road.
Going?
Going north, and they're right there.
About eleven hundred feet.
Yeah.
Are they on Mill Lane?
They're actually faced Wade Harrod.
It's kind of a corner lot?
They're, they're on the north side of Wade Harrod, and Mill Lane dead ends in the Wade Harrod, right there at those units.
They're on the West Fork side of?
They're on the north side of Wade Harrod.
Okay, so they're right there.
I have, you know, put in an offer to buy the property next to me, but there's not been any response to that, so. The properties all on the right side of the road are county. And they're all septic, so.
How much I3 property is there to the north of this track, would you say? I'm trying to get an idea of.
Yeah, it's probably, it would be a gas, ten to fifteen acres, something like that would be my guess. I really don't know for sure, though.
Mill Lane's County Road.
Yes.
What's the wishes of the commission? Do we have more questions from the applicant? How many units?
The site would call for thirty-four units, possibly thirty-six townhomes, depending upon our landscaping plan and what the. and, um, what the, um, what the civil engineer says we can do.
My concern is, you put the development in there now, somebody on that I three above that puts into distribution warehouse, and you've got trucks going in and out in an industrial zone, and you're going to have complaints from neighbors. It's just a, the... I think it would be, could be noisy, especially that area, if that area has not grown. Doesn't look like there's, it's zoned I three, but there's not a lot on any of the parcels there. If somebody were to come in and start putting developments in there, uh, in industrial, like they did out on, uh, out at Rooker, and, uh, is it Florence?
Right.
Where they put the big warehouses up?
Yes.
Uh, if you did something like that on one of these properties, would, you want townhomes right beside of it? I know I, I wouldn't want to live there, knowing the traffic and the noise it potentially could be long-term.
Other comments? Do I have a motion?
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, as much as I'd like to, you know, it, it's tough saying no, but as much as I would, you know, try to make this work, I just don't see it in the way, in its current form.
You bring up some great points. You do. I'm going to make a motion we deny.
We have a motion not to recommend it. We have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we do not recommend, uh, the zoning change. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So our recommendation to council is not to change it, but it can still go to council Tuesday. That's your choice, sir. You can get with Kevin and he can explain the process. All right. Under new business, uh, B preliminary flats, the preserve at Stewart Creek. Staff comments?
Yeah, this is section three of the preserve at Stewart Creek. Uh, this is their preliminary flat. It's, uh, known PRD, fifteen point oh-two acres, fifty-nine lots. Um, this is the last section of this, uh, as far as the preliminary flat review. Um, it is consistent with the, uh, PRD approval and the sketch flat. Um, and so, so it is consistent with everything. Uh, we had, uh, basically six standard comments, and so we want to keep those standard comments, but they have addressed everything. It is in order.
And no other staff comments?
No other staff comments.
Have a motion?
Motion approved.
Have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under new business number C, final flats, Buckingham Hills, section one. Staff comments?
Buckingham Hills, section one, this is, uh, final flat. Um, PRD, forty-one lots, twelve point nine four acres. Uh, the, uh, we have one comment, and that's the only comment that we would still have would be the signature, add the signatures of, of the owner and CUD. Again, it's consistent with the preliminary flat and consistent with the, um, PRD approval.
Please, let's me, it's not voting or taking part in discussion on this item. Y'all have any other questions or comments? Have a motion?
And move we approve.
Have a second? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Final flats, number two, Smyrna Airport Business Park. Staff comments?
This is the final flat, uh, it's for lot three of the business park. Y'all obtained two lots for this in the past, and this is the third lot. Uh, it's on Liberator Lane, off of Aviation Parkway, A one zone. Uh, we did have, we had four comments, uh, one, three, and four really kind of the standard comments. Lot, no, comment number two is just regarding the, this would preclude any further extension of three industrial road. Um, Mr. Black is here, the airport authority, uh, has seen this flat as well as the site plan. It's the next item on your agenda and are, have approved them and are ready to go with them. So, any concern about that part of it, it's certainly, uh, be addressed, I guess, in the future if they ever needed to. Um, they were okay with the lay, the road layout as it's shown, so, um, and I guess that's all I got.
All right. Any other comments or questions? We appreciate you getting the airport authority signing off on it. I think that's the proper way for us to look at anything in this area, so thank you. Anything else? We have a motion.
A move we approve.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under new business site plans, number one, Smyrna Airport Business Park. Staff comments?
The proposed site plan for Smyrna Airport Business Park, lot three, consists of thirty-eight point seven-nine acres, located at the northwest corner of Liberator Lane and Aviation Parkway. Property is currently zoned A one and the proposed use is for an office warehouse, which is allowed by right in the A one zoning district. The property is bound to the north and east by Laverne, to the south by vacant land, to the east by a proposed extension of Liberator Lane. Surrounding zoning consists of A one in Smyrna and R three in Laverne. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Liberator Lane. Square footage of vehicular use area proposing eight-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-three square feet, which would require a square footage of open space landscaping of sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet. Applicant is proposing sixty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-nine square feet. Total parking required two-hundred-and-sixty-nine spaces, proposing three-hundred-and-thirty-six. Handicap parking space required eight, and they are proposing twelve. Uh, landscaping, landscape plans made by the applicant shows a variety of trees and shrubs planted around the perimeter of the property. Street trees are shown lining Liberator Lane as well. Architecture elevations show a primary material of concrete panels with metal roll-up doors at the shipping docks. Uh, proposed site is not located within the hundred-year flood plain. And future land use plan identifies the proposed site as suitable for light industrial slash commercial development. Couple standard comments and one staff comment of submitting a traffic study. Our net, staff recommends approval with comments.
This essentially building very similar to what they've just got through?
Yes.
Yeah. John from the Airport Authority, are y'all in full support of this project as submitted? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Still have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under site plans, number two, Motlow State Community College. Staff comments?
The proposed site plan for Motlow addition three consists of approximately thirty-three point three-six acres, located at five-zero-zero-two Motlow College Boulevard. Property is currently zoned C two and the proposed use is for educational building, which is allowed by right in the C two zoning district. Property is bound to the north by Laverne, to the east and south by the college, and to the west by a vacant tract of land. Surrounding zoning consists of C two and C four in Smyrna and agricultural, industrial special use, R three and R four in Laverne. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Motlow College Boulevard. We have received additional numbers in the table for square footage of vehicular use area proposing two-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-six square feet, which would require square footage of open space landscaping, twenty-eight-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet. They are proposing sixty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty square feet of landscaping. Total parking required two-thousand-nine-hundred spaces, based on the numbers they provided us. Uh, proposing one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-eight total spaces. Handicap parking spaces required twenty-three, and they're proposing twenty-three as well. Landscape plans made by the applicant shows a variety of trees and shrubs planted around the proposed building and throughout the new parking lots in the landscaped islands. Architecture elevations show the building composed primarily of brick. Proposed site is not located within the hundred-year flood plain. And the future land use plan identifies the proposed site as suitable for office, retail, multifamily residential development. Few standard comments and grading plan comments, uh, under staff comments, one, two, and three have all been addressed. Staff comment four, we asked them to calculate the required, for the parking spaces requirement, we asked them to calculate what the total number of anticipated students, staff, and, uh, students, staff, and employees on campus at one time would be, and they are working on getting those numbers over to us. And staff recommends approval with the comment.
Questions?
Could someone talk to me about the grading plan comments, number, number one?
Um, probably for Tom on that one. I think that was something Greg could put in there, but...
Uh, that would be a comment from Greg Upham, and I'm not sure what, I haven't read that comment. That was one he sent directly to planning commission for that, so I can't comment on that one.
Is it something that's required by ordinance, or is this one of those nice-to-have things?
Um, it, it seemed like a nice-to-have suggestion thing.
Okay. I, I guess my concern is, I, I realize how critical mass is there, and with the, you know, continued growth of the school, and also trying to be cognizant of, of taxpayer money, you know, it'd be great if we could maybe do this, I think. Um, I'm, I'm not quite sure what it is, but...
Yeah.
It's something that I don't, if it's not required by ordinance and it was more of a nice to, then I don't see that we keep that.
Are we being requested?
Or number two, probably, yeah.
Yeah, are we being requested to require that?
No.
I wasn't sure what, and if we approved it with it, are we then requiring it? So...
Well, the way it's worded, constructed for water treatment and educational purposes, I don't know if the campus or the professors there have any need for it. That'd be the only reason I would question that at all, but, um, I agree with you.
If they decided that they wanted to do it, they being Motlow, we certainly don't have any issues with it, I would assume.
That's fine, you can exclude.
But it's not necessarily our place also to require that they consider it either, is it?
Well, you don't have to require they consider it, you can ask them to consider it.
I think that's what was the intent, I think, was just...
Outdoor educational.
Ask them to consider it.
Right.
But, uh, there was never the intent to, that we would be required to do that.
I guess if that's the case, then I would...
Remove.
I would, would want to remove that as part of an approval if, if we get to that point in our vote.
And let them talk through that independently.
Yeah, internally at Motlow and decide if they want to do that.
And ultimately, it actually may, reading it, it, it talks about the, the new building will eliminate the only artificial wetland on campus. I'm not aware of the history if they were required to install this wetland for mitigation purposes, so it may be something where they do have to with this wetland. And you can eliminate this comment at this time, and we'll look at it more in grading permit, uh, review, and see that if they actually have to replace this artificial wetland.
Okay. Um, then, I hope I get this right, I'm going to make a motion to approve with staff comments and with eliminating grading plan comments one and two.
To be evaluated during grading plan?
Sure.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
Tom, just a question for me, I guess, because that leaves it up to, if we approve something, that leaves it up to discretion later, correct?
Well...
Whether or not it would be required or not by our department?
It would really be requirement of TDEC at that point, and if TDEC said that you were...
That's what I was trying to clarify. If they required it, then obviously we would have to have them comply to that, but...
Right.
It wouldn't be something we would do here.
No, I would not make that requirement. It would be either coordination with TDEC.
Well, and because Greg Upham had recommended it, that's what I was wanting to clarify, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure that when we, we vote on it, it's kind of a, the done deal at that point, that we leave out of here, we know what we're doing.
I'll second your motion.
All right, the motion is, uh, to approve with staff comments four and grading plan comment three. Correct? That's a motion and a second, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on. Site plans, the apartments of Sterling, Rock Springs Road. Uh, staff comments?
The proposed site plan for Sterling Apartments consists of twenty-six point eight-six acres, located at the corner of Seven Crest Parkway and Rock Springs Road. Property is currently zoned PUD and the proposed use is for apartments, which is allowed by right in this PUD district. The property is bound to the north and east by the assisted living facility, which is part of the overall development, to the south by Smyrna Fire Station, and to the west by I twenty-four. Surrounding zoning consists of C two, R one, and R three. As proposed, the site may be accessed from an entrance off Rock Springs Road. Square footage of vehicular use area proposing one-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet. Square footage of open space, um, landscaping required sixteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet, proposing twenty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-one. Total parking, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight spaces required, and they are proposing five-hundred-and-twenty-eight as well. Handicap parking space required eleven, and they are proposing four-fifteen. Landscape plants made by the applicant shows a variety of trees and shrubs planted around the perimeter of the parking lot and in landscaped islands. Architecture elevations show four, four-story buildings composed primarily of brick and stucco. Proposed site plan is not located within the hundred-year flood plain, and future land use plan identifies the proposed site as suitable for a mix of office, retail, multifamily residential development. Couple standard comments, um, notable to submit E nine-one approval, and five and six, I'll provide approval from TVA for place, parking, slash landscaping and easement, and provide approval to locate playground and playfield in Spectra Energy easement. Uh, staff recommends approval with the comments.
We had other projects that have required those approvals, like from TVA and Spectra Energy.
Yes, we have.
So, that's not... So that's not an unusual type of thing.
No, that's not unusual.
Okay.
This appears both in elevations and layout very consistent with what we've had presented to us.
It is consistent with the APUD approval, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions that you have, then? Do I have a motion?
A move we approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
Item number six, mandatory referral. Staff comments?
This is just a, uh, request from Motlow State Community College. Uh, there is a small, uh, kind of a odd little piece of property that the town owns that is in between, parcel that Motlow owns and, and have, they have now acquired from another owner. And so they have requested that the town, uh, donate that property to them. Uh, it would provide a connection, it's on the map there showing us the, the area highlighted in green. It's about two-tenths of an acre. Uh, it would provide a connection between two areas of parking that they're wanting to construct, as shown on the site plan that you all approved earlier. So, uh, since this is a town property, and, uh, we'll have to review that consistency of our development plan for our community, so, uh...
All the other property was donated from the town anyway, I think.
All the properties where they have, yes, sir. Now, the property to the south of the large parking lot, they, that was not, they have required that from another owner. But, uh, the properties where they have, all the currently developed properties, as well as even some land that they haven't developed yet, further to the south and east there, it was donated by the town, yes.
So the parking lots are currently there, they just don't connect?
No, they're not there now. They are, will be constructed as a part of this building project.
Sounds like a legal descript that see that showed up in a...
Title search.
It's been shown up, actually, it's parcel, this boundary has been shown for, well, at least as long as the property's been divided up the way it has.
Oh, okay.
It was kind of, there's this property where they're, where they're showing parking lot, kind of M-two and M-three is how they've labeled it. That was a, a different property owner. And so it got divided this way for some reason. I don't know the whole story, history on it, but anyway, they've asked for it. It's two-tenths of an acre, so... This will be a recommendation to council.
It's a good use for it now.
And Motlow is such a big part of our community.
Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
Item number seven, bond reviews.
Yeah, we got, uh, four, uh, four bonds tonight. Uh, one is actually an escrow account, it's a small amount of money to cover a small sewer line extension. Bryant Smith Properties, that has not been installed yet. They did request an extension, so we, we are okay with that. Uh, the property that this was served is still owned by them and hasn't been sold. Mill Springs, uh, few items there to finish up. They did request the six-month extension to, in order to be able to complete everything over there, and so we are okay with recommending that extension. Burton Farm, section five, phase two, this is at the end of the maintenance period there, everything is done, so we would recommend release of that. And Lennox, Smyrna, phase one, section one. Can just, I'll finish up there. They did, uh, I have what, since the package went out, I was able to talk with the developer's representative. They're hoping to finish that, uh, before the bond comes up. So if it's, if they do, are able to do that, we would be okay with reducing it to twenty-five thousand, extending it a year as their maintenance bond. If they don't get done, we'll extend it. It's a six-month at the current seventy-five thousand dollar amount. That's all I got.
It needs to stay at the seventy-five?
If they don't get everything finished. If they get done, we're okay with reducing it to, just for as a maintenance bond at that point, and start their one-year maintenance period.
All right. Any other questions? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bond report.
So the last one we're changing, extend six months or release if complete?
No, or reduce.
Or reduce to maintenance?
To maintenance, right.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Thought it was.
Second.
We have a s- motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carried.
Anything else?
We have anything else?
We will meet at regular meeting time and day in January.
Yes, sir, January the fourth.
All right.
First Thursday of January.
Anything else? Stand adjourned.